Call this meeting, order clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
Peña.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Councilmember Notori will not be with us this evening. Councilmember Rovell.
Here.
Councilwoman Schumalo Burke will not be attending this evening and Mayor Melham.
Here. Sunshine notice?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was published in the Thursday, December 24th, 2020 editions of the Bevel Times and Star Ledger. In an effort to prevent further spread of the COVID-19 pandemic, the public meetings have been changed to Zoom. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Bevel Town Hall Bulletin Board and copies are on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and ever and just as well.
Okay, so first of all, I want to welcome everybody to our meeting. Unfortunately, we got started a little bit late and as of right now, we're not live streaming on Facebook, but the meeting is being recorded and will be available on our township website tomorrow. At this moment, I know a lot of the faces here are the usual suspects. I always like to give enough communication, try and educate people as much as possible. The next portion of our agenda is the executive session portion. In a moment, I'm going to ask a council member for a motion and a second and a vote to go into executive session. Traditionally, at that point, we ask all the visitors to leave the room if we are physically present. We are not physically present. We are digitally present virtually. So once we go into executive session, council members, members of the administration and any invited guests for that particular executive session will leave this room and go into a private breakout room. Everybody else, please stay put. There's nothing for you to do. So just stay put. We're going to leave, go into executive session. We have one topic to discuss. I always get in trouble when I give an expectation as to how long we're going to be, but I do not believe it's going to be this long. It should be pretty quick. So in a moment, we're going to leave and everybody stay here. No action will be taken while we're in executive session. No votes, no nothing besides a motion to exit executive session. That's it. So without further ado, if I could have a council member give a motion to go into executive session.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, I heard multiple things going on there. So I believe we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this point, council members, you should get a notification as well as members of the administration. Just click on that and we will be zapped into a private room. Everybody else, just stay put.
Don't see it yet.
Nope.
Nope.
Nope. The fact that I still see everybody kind of tells me that you're.
Not working.
I still see the chief's face. Weird that he's constantly smiling at you when you look at him.
The last time I put a picture up.
Go back to your regular picture.
It's a great picture, chief.
You look happy.
I'm going to make that my background now.
I'm going to get a painting of him and actually put it right behind me.
We got some technical difficulties or what?
Like that, Naomi? Anything? How about the rest of them? Nobody's got any notifications. Not one person. I hear, I hear clicking.
I see nothing.
Once you select them to go to it, you'll have to click that little arrow with the box, Jack.
We hear Corinne over Zoom.
I, I came in, guys. I made it. Are we trying to do the breakout room?
Yes.
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 We aren't trying to do anything.
We're attempting a breakout.
We're waiting patiently.
Okay, great.
You got some?
Did you get it?
Nothing. No notification at all.
Nothing.
I'm going to give Jackie a call.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, as an FYI, the executive session, if it didn't happen tonight, I was just, wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't be anything that I couldn't resolve with an email tomorrow.
I think I want to take a vote that we have, we got breakout.
There it is, man.
Okay, so.
I don't have it yet.
I'm going.
That's because we're talking about you, Ant. Okay, everybody else just remain here. We'll be right.
I don't have it either. I don't have it. It's Tommy, Jackie.
We'll get you in.
I don't either.
Who's that? Mark, we need the chief.
Mark, me, Vinnie.
Me neither.
Those guys in there.
Picture needs an invite.
All I know is I'm in good company. That's all I know.
Well, we got rid of somebody. We got rid of Vin. No, Vinnie's here.
Got rid of Steve. He's in there by himself.
We got rid of Steve. I'm, I could be gone if I hit the link. I'm okay. I'm going to leave. Somebody else is going to entertain everybody if you guys don't get the invite.
Summer wind came blowing in.
We are back. No action was taken while we were in executive session with the exception of a motion to come back into public. So we're here now. We're going to continue with the rest of the meeting. I promised it was not going to be a long executive. We did pretty good. So the next item on our agenda is going to be the report of the manager. Mr. Manager. Is he back? There he is.
I am. Just give me one second. And Jackie, I'm going to do a shared screen, hopefully.
Screen.
So first, I am going to give the council and members of the public a just quick summary update on some of our development or proposed development that we have. I did distribute this for you guys to read. So I'm not going to read word for word, but I am going to just go over the six projects. And certainly we can open it up for any questions or concerns that any council members have. And also we do have Dean on the call with us tonight and Dean is always a plethora of information. So the first property, which we refer to the BIC Bevel Industrial Center. This is under contract. The seller and the buyer has agreed for a cost saving, cost savings to address the environmental cleanup. The next step after the closing will be that the property, there would be a blight study that would be required on this property. Does anybody have any questions as it pertains to the BIC Lincoln Equities?
Oh, I have no question. Just I want to add a little editorial comment to this. For, again, this, this is an update really to members of the council. Just to fill you in on where we are as a redevelopment committee, myself, the deputy mayor and Councilman Cazarelli sit on that committee. This, just so, because Anthony gave the legal definition of the property owner. This is the 12 or 14 acre site on Main Street, not Walter Kitty, not the 24 acre site. This is adjacent that to the north toward Nutley. If Bevel people know it as the fabric warehouse, this is that 12 or 14 acre property. Again, that property has been, in my opinion, has looked like a war zone bombed out after World War II. And again, this council finally got a deal done there and it's, it's something that every single council member should be very proud of that we utilized our powers of either redevelopment or rehabilitation authority and actually brought the seller with a new buyer together. And this site is going to be, what it looks like now will not look like that in 10 years from now. And that's because this council actually moved and acted on that. So congrats to, to this council.
Is that the old federal leather property?
I'm sorry, Steve?
I, I think that was the old federal leather property.
Yes, Steve, it, yeah.
It just, it's all those little.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Federal leather, yeah.
Federal leather.
My grandfather worked there.
We got that done, everybody. Go ahead, Ant.
Our next, our next project is the Roche Diagnostic, Diagnostic, also known as 11 Franklin. There have been some great discussion, I believe, among council members and just in general, that residential on this property would not probably be the best use or the impact on the community in that section of town. So there will be future meetings with the developers to possibly talk about some commercial use on that property. But right now, there's no residential plan of, that has any support coming from the council. So future conversations will be directed in the commercial use. Not, without residential. Any questions on that?
Comment here?
Sure.
So yeah, I, again, this, I think this is a very good policy to, to update the council. I think even just so council members are aware, this update filed, that Mr. Ikonos reading will be distributed to the planning board chairman, planning board vice chairman, so they know the direction that we're heading in. The manager mentioned that there is no appetite for residential on that property. It's not necessarily true. I think what he means is that, that we don't have a majority support of the council to support that, which again is this council's decision and this council's purview. So, you know, it looks like there's not enough support among the seven members of the council to actually work with some residential development, which in my opinion gets you more square footage, which gets you more tax ratables. But it doesn't seem to be that way. So as long as the majority of the council feels that way, as members of the redevelopment committee go forward in their talks with them, we will take that belief into our talks. We're not going to talk tonight about residential if the majority of the council doesn't want that. So this is why we're doing this exercise and I think it's valuable to us.
Next property, 630 666 Washington Avenue. This is the property directly across the street from the Motorcycle Mall, also known as the Restonetti property. This property has been approved for 268 units. The redevelopment plan was adopted at our February 9th meeting. The developer will be appearing before the planning board in the near future. And the council in the, also in the near future, will have to consider and approve a tax abatement. I believe we are discussing the 25 year period of a tax abatement similar to the ones in that have been previously adopted by this council. Any questions on 630 666 Washington Avenue? Moving right along? I'm still on, right?
Yeah, you're on.
Oh, okay. Just too, too quiet. Kmart. It was just recently brought to the attention of.
Anthony, just so you know, you never did share your screen. Not that we need it, I don't think, but your screen is not shared. I don't think we need it, but I'm just telling you that.
Really?
I don't think we need to see it. You're.
You don't need to see it. You're doing, you're doing a good job.
Great job, Ant.
All right, I'll just, so you just see my face?
Yeah, unfortunately.
And I'm, and I'm thinking that you're seeing my, my screen. Jack, I'm going to need your help for my annual report or else we're going to have to get pushed back back. But so.
Running out of time. Let's go.
I'm sorry?
Running out of time.
Well, it has been brought to our attention that Kmart is officially closing. This is the Kmart on, on Main Street. It's officially closing and the property may be up for sale. That it was brought up at the last meeting that the council would have some concern as far as what would be, you know, the potential development there. So probably similar to a, what they, what is considered VB1 is similar to Washington Avenue without residential is more or less a safe zone as, as far as being rezoned. And then of course, in the future, any developer can come and make any kind of application, but it would certainly put the town in the best interest to basically keep that zone free. Any questions on the?
No, no, no.
Through the chair, I had a question.
Wait, Steve, Steve, just before you speak, I'm not going to speak. I just want Anthony to clarify something. Ant, you said VB1 and keep it as is or, or?
So, and Dean can confirm that I'm correct. VB1 would be similar to Washington Avenue.
And it's currently VB2?
Correct.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. Councilman Rovell.
So relative to Kmart, are they going into, they're going into bankruptcy? Is that's what, what's going on, I think, right? Is that, are they asking for protection or they're going to chapter seven? They're just going belly up? Do we know?
I don't know for sure from my limited knowledge of the situation. They are in bankrupt and.
Yeah. So they're going seven.
And this is one that now it's, it's.
They're done. So it may take them a couple of years just to start to liquidate and stuff like that, right?
They start liquidating now. They might be looking to liquidate the property. So that's what, and again, I, I think exercise is, is great for, for the redevelopment committee and Dean and Anthony to share with the whole council. The situation, in my opinion, is very simple. And, and I think this is where the committee was going. I just want to bring it up to the entire council. That is currently, Kmart is currently in the VB2 zone. Just to give you an example, that zone would allow self-storage. I don't think that's a great location for self-storage.
Me, okay.
So I think to protect that, somebody right now can buy Kmart tomorrow, make an application for self-storage and we would be handcuffed to do anything about it. So if this council votes to change the zone to VB1, which is closer to the uses of Washington Avenue, you can get athletic facilities in there and some, some better uses in there. At least it protects us in the short term. And then if a buyer comes in, whoever that buyer might be, and they want to come to us to discuss an area rehabilitation where we can rezone it, you know, for what their use is, if we agree with it, that's fine. But I think we kind of need to act to protect against a use coming in that currently fits that zone, which would be something like self-storage.
Can, can we do like a moratorium on, on certain things like what you're saying, Mike, there like storage or other things? I mean, I know I see Dean's on too. I'm just wondering.
If it's in the zone, I'm going to say no, but I will. That's why we have Dean here. I will call upon Dean Donatelli to.
I mean, like dollar store?
The use is, thank you. If, if, if the use is not a listed permitted use in the zone, then it's a prohibited use. So if, if self-storage is not listed as a permitted use.
Self-storage is permitted.
So there's no way, you'd have to write it out. You can't just do a moratorium on self-storage or any of that other stuff.
Right. Yeah, there, you, yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to change the zone and in effect, you know, you'd be taking out that as a permitted use councilman and then, and then therefore will be prohibited. So that's the one way to achieve it.
We're now seeing.
But a moratorium, just to say no use on that property would not be permitted under the municipal land use law.
Understood.
Yep.
We know, we know who really owns that piece of property? Is it, is it Kmart or is it a Kmart trust or land trust or do we know any of that stuff?
We don't know.
I do not know who owns the property. The mayor does.
I mean, that's something we should find out too.
Hey, Dean, the redevelopment committee, we've gone back and forth on this. Can you just give us a, a one minute executive overview of what we're looking at here?
In terms of the Kmart, the, the process?
Yeah.
So the idea is, is under the municipal land use law, you're permitted to change the zone of a property if it's recommended or, or mentioned in the, the master plan reexamination report. So the, the plan is to update the master plan reexamination report to, to recommend the VB1 zone at this site and then to rezone the site. That's, that's it in a nutshell. So it would, it would be two actions. One is the action of the planning board to, to update the reexamination report. And then the second action is for the council to adopt an ordinance or consider for adoption an ordinance, which would change the zone of the property. That's, that's basically the process. It's all different than redevelopment.
And that would really be a, a defensive mechanism, just to kind of block a use that we don't want that's currently allowed in the current zone, correct?
Yeah, and I think, put a different way is, is it, it allows the, it, it allows or encourages uses which the township thinks are, you know, I think that the township, if it so decides, thinks are better uses for that more appropriate and better for the community than to kind of prevent other, I think it's to encourage growth, development of, of a desired use. And I think, I think there's just lastly, there's been discussion about after the rezone, maybe going into further discussions about potential redevelopment plan and more detailed, very specific zoning criteria for the property, which would be in the redevelopment context as opposed to the municipal land use law.
I think that was last of the, of the stuff, Anthony, that we needed kind of council feedback on. Everything else is just kind of an update to existing stuff. I, I really think that we needed council feedback on, on Franklin Avenue and Kmart for the most part. Is there anything else there that kind of requires council feedback at this point? You muted.
No, sir.
Okay, then we're going to continue with the manager's board.
All right. Do you see my lovely 2020 annual report?
Yeah.
All right. I'll try to be brief. It's the Anthony Ikonos show tonight. So may I take a backseat? Let's see.
The report's a year old.
No, 2020 just ended.
They're retrospective?
Yeah, so obviously 2020 was impacted by the global pandemic and we'll see certain examples. But we start off tonight in the clerk's office. Kelly and Jackie do a great job. As you can see last, in 2020, between ordinances, resolutions, raffles, consumption license, moving right along. Again, this year, we topped over 700 Oprah requests. And the one, one thing that I would point out, if you go towards the bottom of this slide, 6,849 emails, that's double from last year. And again, that's a sign that the global pandemic, people are emailing more and not getting out. Municipal court. First, I could, I want to point out moving violations in municipal court. This is down by a thousand from last year. Last year, we had over 2,300 moving violations. Again.
The answer, the question is, are people driving better or are we doing less enforcement?
No, people are staying home and not going out because there's nowhere to go. And, you know, when we have a 10 o'clock curfew and restaurants are closed, people are not moving. So that, that's a thousand less moving violations. And again, when I get to the police, you'll see the amount of work that they have done through this, this pandemic. The first three numbers, if you take a look at complaints filed between indictables, DPs and special forms, that adds up to 700. Last year alone.
What is that?
That is. I'm sorry?
What is a DP?
Yara, do you want to chime in?
You don't, I thought you knew.
I, I do know. I just don't want to give the wrong one.
The sort of persons. I got it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, Chief Face. All right. Over, we had over 1,500 of a total last year. That's a 50% reduction. Again. Again, what's great about this, we'll, we'll upload this, this report on our website. So people could actually really do take their time. Here's a screen that we didn't have in last year's report because it actually talks about COVID and COVID cases that have been altered based on, on COVID. This is a very important, important screen to share because there is a municipal court backlog. As much as the court is doing an amazing job and trying to continue to do amazing job, thank you, Yara and team in the court. There's 200 and, I'm sorry, 2,650, 53 fences that are on our backlog. So this, this obviously has an impact, obviously on revenue and certainly it's playing, playing a detrimental factor on the court. Stop laughing, man. The tax assessment does a great job. If you take a look at what we've done during this pandemic between added assessments and generating, we've generated $166,000. We processed over 563 deeds and maintained 247 exempt properties. These are just some of the highlights for each of these slides. Second. Give me a second. Law department, Mr. Martino. Thank you. There's a couple of highlights on here. Obviously, processing the employee handbook is very important and we hope to do that. We recently completed the property transfer of the Soho Sitting Park, which has been pending for some time. And very, very important, we have been deleting many outdated and obsolete ordinances and we continue to do that. If you go back and take a look at what's on our books, they're outdated. So to, to clean this up, we thank Steve for all of his hard work. The man with the perfect smile tonight, Chief Minakini and the Bevel Police Department did an amazing job during this pandemic. I mean, in 2020, during this global pandemic, 53,000 service calls, okay? They responded to over 1,400 motor vehicles and answered over 20,000 emergency 911 calls. This is all during a pandemic. We had three retirees in 2020 and I think we have actually added to that. Obviously, our, our summary of what we have as far as 103 sworn in officers and eight civilians. Again, here's a slide in our, in our annual report that we didn't have last year. Bevel responded to over 2,400 medical assistance COVID related. And our department, our police department unfortunately was inflicted with 37, 37 of our officers did get inflicted by the disease, COVID disease. If you take a look at our trend, again, thank you, Chief Minakini and the entire police department. A historic 10 year low on robberies and burglaries down in, for the past, in the, in the past 10 years, it's the lowest it's been. And if you take a look at some of our summaries, we're actually lower in 20 than we were in 19, in 2019. Again, a great job by the Bevel Police Department and they still trying to do their best through community relations with over 2,600 parks, walks and, and, and in total engagement into our community. Again, public safety, Chief Oliveri in the fire department during this pandemic, obviously very, very challenging. Everyone knows that our fire department is also our EMS. So they're responding to not only 4,900 calls of service, but some of those calls, 277 are COVID emergency calls. Those, those are calls that, that obviously we didn't have a previous year. Most recently, the department, you'll see a lot of changes. We had 13, we have 13 people that will be retiring this year. Fire prevention, 1,400 inspections. Again, this is a great job by our, our department through this, through this pandemic. The one, one number that jumps off of this slide, unfortunately, our ambulance billing. We have collected 427,000. That number is off. Unfortunately, it's, it's off by almost 200,000. People did not go to the hospitals in 2020 if they didn't have to, obviously because of COVID. And again, here's a COVID slide that we've never had prior to this because obviously we didn't have COVID in 2000 last year. And again, 22 of our bravest were inflicted by the disease. Members from our community came out with great donations during the course of the year. We move over to the public works. And again, here's where I thank Bobby Weltas again, our newest superintendent of public, public works, doing a great job. Certainly has been given a major, major challenge. Okay, how, what is E-Waste? E-Waste is computers, television, stereos. This number, 64,000 pounds, which contributes to a savings of substantial money. That number is up by 15,000 pounds more than last year. Again, more people are home. More people are buying televisions, computers, stereos. And again, when you throw out an old television or an old computer, that's part of our E-Waste. Our white goods, we've collected over $7,000 in white goods. Again, that hasn't been done in a, the best year ever. So again, when we do some recycling, that's very, very important. One second. Let me jump right here to salt ordered. In 2019 and 2018, we, we spent or actually used under 300 tons of salt. Just to get an impact of what happened in, in the last quarter, or I should say January and February of 2021, we've already used 800 tons of salt. So that's, we use more in the. So that's, we used more in the first two months of 2021 than we did in 18 and 19. Unfortunately, you know, the last two years, we were very, very lucky that we did not have a major, major weather. This year, it's making up for it. Tree trimming, tree trimming is expensive, but last year in 2019, we took down 29 trees. This year, we, we addressed 69 trees. And when we say we take down a tree, because we do know we have tree lovers and rightfully so, these trees are either a public hazard or possibly a danger to property or even worse, dangerous to residents, or the tree is dead. And again, we're, you know, we're doing the best that we can with our budget, but 69 trees were taken down. Can't say enough about the water department. Water department has done an amazing job. We repaired 268 water meters. Again, that number has tripled over the years. We did, not only did we do some repairs, we replaced water meters, we did over 100 audits. And again, this is great for residents as well as the community because in some cases, you know, we weren't getting the, the right amount and that's not fair to people that are paying the right amount. Buildings and grounds, we continue.
I, I'm going to let you know, Mr. Iacono, your time is running out.
All right, I'm getting, I'm getting close. Building department, again, when you take a look at what they've done in this last year, they've collected $1.2 million in fees collected. Last year, just so you know, they collected 1.3, but in, in a 12-month period where 10, 10 of the months was during a pandemic, we've never closed our doors. And Frankie and the group, the entire public construction department did a great job. $1.2 million in 2020 during a pandemic. Recreation, doing the best they can under the circumstances. We're still trying to offer programs as best as we can. And again, when there's a mandate that you can't have people in gyms and you can't have to, and you have to social distance, we really had to do far reach. As you can see, the, the Easter drive-through was the first drive-through and hopefully, you know, hopefully we'll go back to some normal opportunities. But right now, recreation is doing the best that they can under the circumstances. Health department, we have Vince DeFilippo, again, can't say enough about Vince Colleen and the entire health department that are out there every day during this pandemic. And if you take a look at what we're, we're doing over, close to, you know, 300 food establishments, residential and commercial environment hazard inspections, 5,500 inspections were taken during the past 10 months. Dollar ride, we transported over 7,000 trips. Okay, those are seniors. And again, this is all happening while we're dealing with a deadly virus, but there were 700, $7,250 ride calls. So that's again, take, take our hats off to the health department. Vital statistics, again, all these numbers in this report will be uploaded, so you'll have the opportunity to review it. Again, when you take a look at COVID, we had to, our health department had to do contact tracing, over 3,100 cases had to be traced and that, that all takes time. So again, we take our hats off for them, fees collected. And last but not least, my last slide, can never leave out what the Belleville Municipal Green Team has done. In 2020, we were awarded the bronze certificate. Again, Gabby, thank you so much for all you do. I know the silver medal is right around the corner. And again, this report will be uploaded. And certainly, if you have any questions, please forward them to the manager's office. And that covers my report tonight.
So that's, your entire report was, was this?
Yes, it was.
Okay, that's fair. I, yeah, please definitely have this uploaded to the website. There's a lot of good data here, things that I will certainly more than likely be stealing from my state of the township address. Great statistics, though. The manager points out some good points. We have departments like construction code that virtually mimicked the revenue of the previous year, which is great. And then we have other departments that were off revenue, just so residents know, when a, when a department is off revenue, more than likely, the budget unfortunately doesn't get reduced the following year that's made up somehow. We're going to hope on some state aid, which is what I'm going to talk about and some federal aid I want to talk about next. So, okay, manager, you're done with the report of the manager, we'll go off to the report of the mayor? Yes. Okay. Okay, so report of the mayor. So I always like to start out with some different updates. Today is Tuesday. Every single Tuesday since this pandemic began, I sit with every single Essex County mayor, we discuss different things every morning. So Mr. Iacono and Chief Minakini, what was discussed today is that there is going to be a reimbursement, first and foremost, for that major snowstorm we had a few weeks ago. So we have to get our numbers in. I don't know what that means, but I'm certainly, certain you gentlemen know what that means. They're telling us to submit our numbers for reimbursement from that major snowstorm, which I know we had about $75,000 in overtime. And I'm sure we'll get a portion of that reimbursed. So please, if you guys don't know that already, please make sure we submit those. Next update for Mr. Iacono and our assistant manager is the fact that there is a stimulus bill, a federal stimulus bill making its way through Congress. Our congressional representatives tell us that there's going to be a vote in the House this coming Friday. And that really could help the 2021 budget, everybody. So, Mr. Manager, I'm not quite sure what you need to do with that, but we need to find out, every single municipality will be allocated a certain amount of money based on our population. So we need to kind of dig into that however we can. Those are the two updates from the mayor's meeting this morning. I will say that yesterday concluded Chinese New Year. We don't really normally ever talk about Chinese New Year except for this year. This year was the 150th anniversary of the first ever Chinese New Year celebrated on the Eastern Seaboard, right here in Belleville, New Jersey. This year is the year of the ox. And while we could not conclude Chinese New Year yesterday with our grand finale, which was our lantern launch to commemorate 150 years with 150 lanterns, because of the snow and the rain and the weather conditions of yesterday, we unfortunately had to cancel that. But about two weeks ago, we had an unbelievable event, a live event, a virtual event scheduled through our Facebook page, through our library, which was a great partner. I shared it on my Facebook page, was a great video. We've collectively had thousands of views on that video and I think the township of Belleville represented our history very well. I think that was a great event, a, a first and probably a last time event, unless there's going to be a 300-year event 150 years from now. But I think it was a great, great event. This past Friday, I had the opportunity right here in the mayor's office to meet with one of Belleville's distinguished veterans, a young man, his name is Seaman Louis Casa. And he's a Belleville guy, he's Ecuadorian by, by country, came here, first of his family to be naturalized. He serves in our military, serves in our Navy. Parents are still here, he lived here up until recently when he moved his family down to Virginia. Great opportunity to meet with him. I share that on Facebook, I encourage everybody to give him some well wishes there. Black History Month is going to be concluding in about a week. We have been displaying our Black History Month posters here in Belleville Town Hall, next to the mayor's office, the entire month of February. And I've been sharing on that sporadically every couple of days, a different person of our history, of Belleville's history that we've been sharing. So I encourage everybody to pay attention to that. We are still doing COVID testing, am I correct, Mr. Manager?
Yes, we are doing COVID testing and every other Friday, we'd be doing COVID and antibody testing.
Got it. Information is on our township website and that is available here in Belleville for free. Everybody needs to know that. COVID vaccinations, it's been slow. Township has very little to do with it. County has even, county has somewhat to do with it, but again, they are kind of held hostage by the state and the federal government limitations on the number of vaccines available. So there, I, we do encourage everybody to sign up at the state site, we do encourage everybody to sign up at the county site. If you are homebound senior, our health department is keeping a list. The county, as far as our mayor's call today, is re-engaging their program of potentially coming and administering vaccines to homebound seniors. So I encourage you to call our health department to sign up for that. Lastly, rounding out the updates is going to be our library. Our library has some great events. We really need you to check out the library website and follow social media. In March, we're having Leprechaun Bingo and we are starting a brand new initiative of enhanced ESL, something that I've been talking about since taking office. Library's always done conversational ESL, we're literally doubling down and tripling down on that. And President Peralta's been doing a great job at the library with that. It's going to be up and running in April and we're very, very excited about that. You know, basic stuff, we've had classes that go on in the evening and we've had some requests to have daytime classes because some people work in the evening. So we've heard that as far as the library is concerned and we're excited to be bringing these programs to us. Budget update, for those of you who are curious, twice I have mentioned here publicly my mayor's report that I want a budget on time and I'm not necessarily interested in voting on a temporary budget. There are extenuating circumstances which may delay that. I don't think they're valid at this point because March 5th, Mr. Manager, March 5th is going to be when the state is, it's due our financial statement, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, just as a FYI, the financial statement through Kim, Judith and Joe was completed on Friday. So we're probably about two weeks ahead of time that we'll be sending it down to the state.
Residents, members of the council, we have never heard something like that before. So congrats to our finance team, congrats to you, Mr. Iacono, we are two weeks early. And just so the council members know, we do have a budget committee, myself, deputy mayor and Councilman Cazarelli. That financial statement is important because we have the requests from every single department, but we have no idea what our revenue was to apply that revenue to this coming year. So now that financial statement is complete, it's been sent down two weeks early and now we can actually start plugging some of those numbers in and find out where we are with our budget. I'm looking at my notes, I just kind of said it, the budget committee has had a formal meeting. We're not big, this council's not big on committees. The way we work it is that if you are a council member and you have a special interest in something, you're in charge of that committee and you could take two people with you. Myself, the deputy mayor and Councilman Cazarelli have formed a, a budget committee. We actually had meetings already in the manager's office every 20 minutes from about 9:30 to about four o'clock in the afternoon. Every 20 minutes, another department was wheeled in. They showed us our, their asks. We all took our pens out and crisscrossed and X out many things and sent them back out to rework the numbers. And now we're waiting on just adding some anticipated revenue to that. So I think the budget committee's doing a great job. And again, I'm happy that the financial statement was done two weeks in advance because I do want a budget struck. If we are going to get federal stimulus money, we could always amend after we send the budget down the trend. And I, I do not believe in holding off on the budget because we're waiting on X, Y and Z. We're a $72 million corporation with, with professionals on staff, we should be able to get a budget done on time and I'm looking forward to that. That's it for the budget update. The last thing? Oh, okay, I'm now told we're live on Facebook, everybody. The last issue I have is, Mr. Manager, some, just some questions. I've been kind of emailing and discussing some neighborhood issues with you over the course of nine weeks now. On last look today, some of those issues have not been addressed and I'm just curious as to where we are with some of them. Some of you listening to this might be saying, well, why can't he just send an email? I've sent seven emails. I have every email documented here. There's been a various amount of issues all over the board and my issue isn't necessarily the lack of resolution to those things. It's if I'm the mayor and I drive around, I see an issue, a violation or, or I have a complaint and I take a picture of it and I document it and I send it to you and then you facilitate it to whatever department's in charge of that. If nine weeks goes by and I send six or seven emails and I follow up in person three or four times, if I can't get resolution, I, it troubles me to think what the average member of the public has to go through to, to make a complaint and get some issues resolved. So I don't know where, where the breakdown is. I'm, I'm sure that you, you know of each and every one of my neighborhood issues that I've been complaining about now for nine weeks. I've actually talked about them at two different council meetings and they've been the subject of seven different emails to you and various departments. So is there a breakdown in technology, a breakdown in communication, a breakdown of something, is there something that we can do to get some resolution? If my issue isn't necessarily, I see these issues every day because they do bother me when I see graffiti or if I see a car on blocks in the driveway or if I see a chain link fence where it shouldn't be. But what does the average person's, what is their response and what is their reaction when they try and call a department as just JQ public, calling in some department to make a complaint? If, if I can't get resolution after nine weeks and seven emails and three or four follow-ups, I, I just, it pains me to think of what the average person, the public has to go through to get some resolution.
Yeah, Mr. Man, I think the only thing that every, every email has been addressed and it's been addressed by the inspectors, every summonses have all been issued. And unfortunately, that, you know, we just spoke about a backlog. So I could get you copies of the summonses that have been issued as far as, and if there's some court dates, we can, we certainly can give you that. But it is a little frustrating and again, you know, no one has control over COVID. But every one of the concerns, I think one was a vehicle on blocks, I think there was another vehicle parked or vehicles parked. I've been, I've been assured that warnings, summonses and every other possible means of addressing it have been addressed. So certainly, we'll, we'll get you another update to, to, to see where they are in the, in the system itself.
I mean, I think you can appreciate the fact that if, if it's frustrating to me after nine weeks, and I think the average person in public needs to know that there is a process and I, and I get that process totally, but to me, you know, if the nine weeks of not seeing something resolve, you know, I just think there's, there might very well be a breakdown somewhere. And if there is, you know, you can bring that to the council and we can try and address what that breakdown is, if there's, you know, needs to be more help or more assistance or a better call line or a hotline or, or something, you know, you can bring that to us so we could try and address because to me, nine weeks and still seeing the same exact concerns is, is just troubling to me. I don't know what to tell you.
Absolutely.
Okay, next up, we have the approval of minutes. Kelly, if you're speaking, you're on mute.
Muted.
Not at this time, Mayor, I'll have them next meeting.
Okay, next item is communications.
A letter, letter of resignation received from Carmine Matia from the zoning board of adjustments. Be received from Comcast of New Jersey, a check in the amount of $140,067.98 for the use of municipal right of way. And C, letter received from Kaylee Rodriguez stating her concerns about people not cleaning up after their dogs and recommending a neighborhood watch to help keeping Belleville clean.
So just, just so the residents know, Kaylee is a 10-year-old resident of Belleville, which I, I, you know, I get a lot of emails and I respond to every single email, but having an email from a 10-year-old who's interested in cleaning up her neighborhood, I love it. I did reply to her today. I CC'd the manager and DPW director, telling her that we will look into proper signage. It's more about, I'll just say it here, okay, it's about dog waste in her neighborhood and on her way to the high school. I did mention that we're going to have a dog park soon near the high school property that might alleviate some issues. But I did let her know and I CC'd the manager and the DPW director, if we can just look at some signage and some basic low-hanging enforcement, that might work. If not, I look forward to working with Kaylee on figuring out a solution to this problem. Next item on our agenda is ordinances.
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay, next item, we're moving quick, everybody. Next item on our agenda is public comments. I'm going to need a motion to open public comments.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made in second, let's do an all in favor. Okay, everybody, so as we start the public commenting portion of tonight's meeting, February 23rd, I see some new faces here and I see some existing faces. And just wanted, for the benefit of all, this is public commenting, you are allowed five minutes to speak. You can basically speak on virtually anything you want, but as I will remind everybody that this council, back probably in 2000, I want to say early 2018, this council adopted a resolution amending the council meeting bylaws. And I just want to read a portion of that resolution. It does say, upon recognition of the chair, which in this meeting is myself, speakers shall stand and give their name and address for the record. Since we're virtual, I'm going to ask everybody to state their name and address for the record. It does go on to say that all are expected to engage in a respectful and orderly discourse. Persons entering into personal, impertinent or slanderous discourse or persons who become boisterous or unruly during the public commenting shall at the discretion of the chair, which is me, or at the objection of a council member forfeit the remaining time to address the mayor and council. I will add to that, that after your time is up, again, you have five minutes, that's plenty of time, after your time is up, we're going to ask all members of the public to respect everybody else's time and everybody else's ability to engage the governing body and respect the fact that they will be muted after five minutes. If for some reason anybody unmutes themselves and becomes unruly and disruptive during the meeting, I I will have them removed from this virtual meeting. So with that being said, to keep it consistent to every single meeting that we've done so far. I'm going to first ask the clerk whether or not we have any public comments that are emailed, just so members of the public know. We offer many ways to communicate with this governing body. We don't have to do that, but we do. So every single member of the public can email in a comment to the clerk prior to five o'clock on our council meeting days. And we read those first. Second round is anybody that's here on video, they can raise their hand. I will I will acknowledge them. They could speak. Then we move on to those that are on telephone conference. So Madam Clerk, being consistent with how we've done it from day one. I do know that we have several public comments that were emailed in, correct?
Yes.
Okay, can we start with number one, please?
First one I have is from Frank Adhoda. He lives at twenty two Prospect Street. He says, hello, Mayor and Council. What is the plan to attract new businesses to fill vacant storefronts such as Payless? Walgreens near Home Street, five locations in the Main Street strip mall. It seems Kmart is also on the verge of closing. I'm concerned that homeowners like myself will continue to be taxed even higher.
Thank you, Frank. First time I've kind of seen your name and address. First, I want to thank you for participating in our meeting. Valid questions and I appreciate the comments. I think you may have, if you've been tuned in in the beginning of this meeting. You may have heard some discussion about our redevelopment updates. But just to go through, as you probably can understand, we are a government. We look to create a good business culture and good business environment, but we don't necessarily have the ability to pick and choose which businesses come in. We just create that good environment. For instance, because in my opinion, because of some of the great decisions this council has made over the past two and a half to three years. We are attracting things now like Wawa, Lidl, Starbucks is now coming. We are trending in the positive direction as to constantly getting the dollar stores and the lower, in my opinion, the lower quality uses of some of these stores. So. I think as a as a council and as an administration, as a township, I think we've done a good job in laying the foundation to attract better businesses. But you said specifically Walgreens. You might have noticed that the last week or so Walgreens is now all fenced off. I've actually personally met with the person who bought that property. It's going to be a nice supermarket, a smaller supermarket. A lot of international food is going to be there. It is not a lower end store. It's a quality store. I've seen the photos. I've seen the pictures of the other locations. It's something that I think we're all going to be proud of. Again, Bellville's on the upswing when it comes to that stuff. Five locations in the strip mall. While we can't necessarily pick and choose what comes in the strip mall, I will tell you again. That this council has done some zoning changes. It used to be very difficult. It might shock you, Frank, to realize that. You could not put a pizzeria, you could not put a barber shop or a salon or a nail place, I think, in a strip mall. It was crazy. You would be denied and have to be told that you have to go before the zoning board. This council, this governing body right here, we've changed our zoning laws so much so to make it very easy now for service type uses. And those type of retail uses to come in. And again, all we could do is set policy that paves the way. Kmart, if you've talked, if you paid attention during Mr. Manager's report. The council's actively deciding on whether or not we want to proactively change that to get better uses and. You know, Frank, just to let you know, your point is well taken. I hope I hope every it resonates with every council member here. Because you say that you're going to continue to be taxed. We want to get good ratables. So a members of my council know this. A big box store gives you limited tax ratables. A huge parking lot gives you limited tax. We want density. We want more square footage. We want multi level developments up because we can tax that two, three, four, five times depending how many stories there are. So. I know my council, I know the council here is listening and I know that we know that taxpayers want better ratables and better quality ratables. It's something that we're trying to deliver you. But I thank you for your comments and I hope to hear from you soon. Next.
One is from William Milden and he states, good afternoon. I don't need to have. Esquire after my name when it comes to a conflict of interest. I just know the differences between right and wrong. When Bellville Watch challenged the town council to pass a resolution requesting action from the AG's office. To investigate all the corruption that went on in two thousand fourteen at the BOE. You basically said that the council as a body couldn't get involved in the school district. So why are you renting your house to the BOE? Many people believe the town meetings are held without people being allowed to attend in person. Because that would help Walt Kane and his crew from filming. Thanks. Bill Milden, sixteen Hunkel Street, Bellville, New Jersey. And then under that, there is an email from Frank Fleishman that states. Just publish this. We'll make it social media official tomorrow afternoon. Let's see if this starts a brush fire. There's a website and it says, Happy New Year, Frank Fleishman the third.
Okay. I'm unaware of any brush fire, so I'm going to assume that didn't work. And I don't really see much to comment on on Mr. Milden's. You know, I don't think this council will take up an action from seven years ago. I do believe and take political corruption, political issues very seriously. And I can assure you if the Attorney General thought there was some misdoing. That happened seven years ago, by now somebody would have acted on that. As far as in person meetings, I've been adamant, I prefer in person meetings. Unfortunately. Our health officer says we can't do that. We can't socially distance in the council chambers. And I actually watched this morning, the Board of Education meeting from last night. In the camera view, there was only three people during public commenting. There were six people. Only one of those people was a new person. All five are people that also always attend meetings. So. I actually don't think the public wants to attend these meetings. If you look here at all these squares, there are far more squares now. There are thirty nine squares here total. Whereas I'm not sure the Board of Education meeting that was in person yesterday had thirty nine people there. I think we're reaching for more people and giving for more people the ability to submit comments multiple ways, including the way that you were able to submit a comment via email. I think that we are being extremely transparent and affording everybody the opportunity to actually do that. So yeah, there's thirty nine people right now participating in the Zoom. It does not include the Facebook feed that is now up and running and people are watching. So thank you. And I think this council's done a great job in making our council meetings accessible. I know three years ago, or I should say four years ago, council meetings were done in person. Nobody else can see them. Since this council's been seated, we've livestreamed meetings when we were in person. We've livestreamed my Facebook, to social media, to township Facebook, township website. We're now having Zoom meetings. We're now allowing people to participate in various different formats. I mean, there's nobody that's going to legitimately look at this and say that we are not trying to catch the wide net to include more and more people. Next.
Next one is from Mario Drawz, ninety five Bell Street. Public comments. The letter resignation from the zoning board. I see that the person resigning was your choice candidate for council last year. Guess he is moving and really loved Bellville that much, just like you did in two thousand and four when you moved out of town. Resolution number four, please explain. I believe the mayor and council are violating my First Amendment rights and the rights of other citizens who wish to attend public meetings in person. A federal judge in PA ruled it is unconstitutional in a violation of our rights to assemble despite COVID. Again, if the Board of Ed can have public meetings where citizens can attend, where is the safety and health issues? Do you have a letter from the health officers saying this or do I Oprah that letter? Zoom meetings are perfect for you. You can prepare your answers to the citizens you write in prior to the meeting in silent others with the audio button. This month is Black History Month and I think the mayor should apologize to the Black Lives Matter gathering. That was held months ago at town hall. Instead of attending, it was posted that you could not attend. Is it true you were in a bar restaurant on Drolman Street during the rally? Guess you did not want to take a stand. Why are you refusing to answer my question with a simple yes or no about the resolution condemning? The January sixth, twenty twenty one insurrection in Washington DC. Three meetings have gone by in total silence. Can it be that you are a Trump supporter and will not admit it? You are the same person who ran for state assembly as a Republican and now claim to be an independent. I wonder why. I guess it is your hatred toward a handful of us that dare question or challenge you. Hate accomplishes nothing. We all want what is best for our town.
I agree with you, Mario. Hate accomplishes nothing. I would ask you to probably take your own advice on that. I guess there's going to be now four meetings because there's still nobody willing to put forth a resolution. I don't think it's any national issues have anything to do with us here locally. And I'm not interested in taking a nonpartisan board, which is exactly what we are, in getting involved in national political disputes of the day and I'm just one person. Black History Month, nobody, nobody in this township, no mayor for sure has ever done more to for diversity. Actually, the banners that are outside the mayor's office right now are banners that were actually paid for me. Feel free to Oprah that, but they were designed. By my staff and paid for me by my company and they promote Bellville's black history. I then took those banners and created the first ever Black History Month event in the history of Bellville where I invited my friend, North Mayor Ross Baraka. To speak at that event. That event was heralded as widely successful. In an event that people still talk about to this day. The video is on my mayor's website page, mailhandforbellville.com. Anybody wants to check that out. The next year, those exact same posters were used in the school district's Black History Month presentation where I stood on stage. Wearing a historical black figure from Bellville on my shirt. And I proudly discuss Bellville's black history. So I don't think I owe an apology to anybody when it comes to black history. Maybe prior administrations or prior mayors who never acknowledged Bellville's black history should probably do that. I think you're actually a former mayor, Mario, so that would actually help. I'm not going to get into the public meetings. It's been addressed and in every single meeting we discussed this. I already answered that question before. Do I have a letter from the health officer stating this? Yes, Mario, you know that. We've actually read that as a communication to a private prior meeting when you actually sat on that. So. You actually sat in on that meeting, two or three meetings or months ago. So feel free to Oprah that. It's certainly certainly there. Resolution number four, Anthony, defer or our Kim, our CFO. Anybody wants to talk about the resolution deferring local school tax quickly? I'm assuming it's going to be Mr. Icono or somebody in our finance department.
Could you hear me?
Yeah, resolution that number four, deferring local school tax, something that we do, I believe, every single year. I'm not going to speak.
Yeah, this is exactly, this is just a annual. It's required and we just do it every year. There's nothing new about this at all.
It's an annual thing that we've done. You probably did it, Mario, when you were mayor. I know it's done usually at the beginning of every single year and working my way back up to the top, Resolution Zoning Board Officer, he has the right to resign. He has the right to move on. I did have a conversation with him. He was a candidate for First Ward Council. He does live in Silver Lake and I believe he actually was disgusted with the conditions of what he says are Silver Lake and how it's gone downhill the last couple of years or so. And that was actually part of his decision move. He was willing to be part of the solution, but unfortunately. He could not be part of the solution, so he opted to leave town rather than see his property values diminish. Do we have anybody else?
Yes. One I have is Vincent Francinanti, one twenty nine Prospect Avenue. He says, please submit my comments for the public comment segment. Mr. Mayor, it has come to my attention that you have a very valuable and historic painting in your town hall office. It appears you and your appointees on the library board okayed a resolution to loan you this painting. This painting is from the eighteen hundreds and is very valuable. It is also something that all residents of Bellville and any visitor should have the right to view if it belongs to the library. I am sure you are aware that a buddy of yours allegedly took the painting to Atlantic City and for some reason the painting was damaged. I understand it cost the library seven thousand dollars to have the painting frame repaired. This historic painting should immediately be returned to its rightful place at our library.
Thank you, Mr. Francinanti, for your comments. Okay, so now we're talking about the painting behind me and we must be doing a pretty good job if this is where where our complaints have come to. So I agree. First of all, Mr. Francinanti says, my appointees, those are the mayor's appointees. Every single mayor appoints members of the library board. Nothing different than I'm the mayor. This has gone on for many, many years or so. So the appointees that are mine are actually the mayor's appointees. You are absolutely correct, Mr. Francinanti, and I applaud you. It is on loan from the library here. When I first went to the library board meeting. This painting, which is an historic painting from the eighteen. Eighteen eighteen thirty one. It's an extremely valuable painting. It was appraised by either Christie's or Sotheby's for about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And when I first went to the library, I found it in a hallway, not in a basement, but in a corridor leaning against the wall. And I was astonished by that. The painting did eventually get hung in our atrium room upstairs, but then when that room was repainted. And it was more of a very contemporary looking room. The painting was decided by the acting director, I believe. That it just didn't fit there and they didn't know what to do with it. And I said, well, you know what? We finally have a mayor's office in the township of Bellville. I think it would be great to be here. I will tell you that as late as today. There was actually a film crew in my office today from the township of Irvington. And we stood in front of it and I got a chance to educate them on Bellville's history and how historic this painting is. So I agree with you. Residents of Bellville and visitors should have a right to view it and every single video that I make from the mayor's office, which is often. This video, this painting is always prominently displayed behind me. Every time there's a photo of this office, it's in it. Today was the background for a video I made for the mayor of Irvington. And I like to highlight it and I would assure you that more people see this painting behind me via my social media page. Or have the opportunity to come into this office than see it as it was kind of in a corridor in the library. And it is on loan, much like I don't compare myself to the President of the United States, but just much like the President of the United States. Has the ability to take any artifact or art from the Smithsonian and display in the Oval Office. This was a resolution that was passed by the governing body of the library board, making it on loan to this mayor to me. For the current display and advertisement in the mayor's. I think it's a good thing. I think it's a good thing. And again, we must be doing pretty good things if this is what we are attacking me on today. No other comments emailed in?
No, that's it.
Okay, so now we are going to be consistent and anybody that's on video. Anybody I can see on video live, I just need you to raise your hand, be acknowledged by me. You can then unmute yourself. I see a hand right here. The only name I see is Val. Yep, okay, sir. Just state, unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Valentino Nucci, junior, sixty two Cedar Hill Avenue. Just really two comments or questions. Back late December of last year. The mayor and the council okayed a four way stop sign on Cedar Hill and Mare. And the traffic has just gotten ridiculous. I totally understand that the winter storm does not help. But we really do need this up and because we're constantly either dodging traffic or. It's just a dangerous situation. It just keeps on getting worse and.
When you say up, so we approved it and it's not up yet?
No, sir.
Okay, how many months? How long ago was that?
Since December of last year. You 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 had to sec, we had the second, you had the second meeting and you okayed it.
Right, I remember you and I talking about this in in town.
January.
Okay, so the way it works is as you, I think I maybe have explained to you.
Yeah, I had to wait twenty days and then you'll they'll schedule.
No problem. So I do see the chief is with us. I'm sure he's already making a note and he will find out what's going on. Maybe with the snow in the ground, they can't get it in the ground.
I totally understand that. That's okay. I just just bringing it, just bringing it up, bringing it up since it's getting melted. And the other one is. I'm sorry, it just looks really disgusting, but you have so many people shoveling out their cars and holding spots. Can't do that. It looks terrible. We're getting garbage cans, garbage bags, chairs, baby strollers. I mean, you name it, we got it. Is there any, is there anything that the police department or anybody can do about that? I mean, I know it's probably. That nobody could park anywhere, but I mean, it looks really terrible.
I I hear you. So first and foremost, let me just make sure I'm certain the chief has already made note and we will have an answer. If not tomorrow, within a day or so, I'm certain of that. Your second issue is a valid, I've recently learned how this works because again. I get a lot of emails. I respond to every one of them. And I had somebody say to me that there was somebody that put some lawn chairs in a parking spot. They called the police department and the police department, in their words, failed to enforce our ordinance. So first and foremost, we do have an ordinance on that. The issue is, as I dug into this, because I do, I want to educate myself. Just because there is a lawn chair there, the police department doesn't necessarily know who the culprit was. We don't know who did it, so we can't find the person who did it because we don't know whose garbage can, sometimes you might because of the address, but. We don't, I mean, I've seen everything from ironing boards to everything. What I believe is the policy is that maybe the police department, even though we do have. What I believe is the policy is that maybe the police department, even though we do have an enforcement, we do have an ordinance that can be enforced if we catch somebody in the act, which is rare. But I believe the solution to the problem and Mr. Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, the solution problem may be, I believe our DPW has the ability to actually just remove the obstruction. We don't necessarily know who the culprit is, but I believe that our DPW can remove the obstruction. I'm not sure if that's correct. That's my assumption, Mr. Manager.
And in most cases, we take the lawn chair, the garbage barrel, the barbecue pit.
Ironing board, they're seeing an ironing board.
We bring it down, we bring it down, we take, take it out of the spot, bring it down to the Public Works Facility. And if people want to recover it, they can drive down and recover it. If not, we discard it.
So the solution is really kind of call the police department, but really it's a town manager issue or DPW issue that DPW would be able to actually enforce. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're still on video. Anybody that I can see waving, okay, Ms. Fleishman. You're muted, Ms. Fleishman. There you go.
Good evening. How are you? First of all, I mentioned this, oh, sorry, Carmella Fleishman, 33 Main Street, Bellville, sorry. I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago about the arrow light on Union. Again, if that's, you know, being worked on, that would be greatly appreciated. The lovely snow mounds. DPW did a great job, first of all, but Mr. Mayor, you said you spoke to all of the other mayors on your weekly address. Now, was this a part of a plan to maybe take the snow mounds away? And you guys and DPW was just waiting to see what the weather was going to be bringing because it was so unstable in the last couple of weeks, because just letting the snow mounds melt naturally will take too long. Unfortunately, every town has run into this problem. It's not just Bellville or Nutley. I've gone through all the towns. My mom happens to live in West Orange. She saw West Orange was starting to remove the snow mounds. Is that something that's being worked on or is it just going to be like a natural progression of just letting it melt? And finally, again, I know the in-person meetings were still little, you know, need to be worked out and things like that, but since more and more people are getting vaccinated, is this something that with proof of vaccination, because as you get, as you get your vaccines, you get your little card? Is this something that it's going to be easier for a person who has been vaccinated that you can start coming or, you know, going to an in-person meeting? And then on the subject of vaccination, the website, the EssexCovid.org is a wee tad challenging, challenging to get through. But if you keep trying and about like eight, nine o'clock in the morning to try to make an appointment, I've been trying for the past three months, give or take, to make an appointment. I finally got my first appointment for this upcoming Saturday. So they, you know, they're very nice when you call in to, you know, to, you know, express your any concerns. So that's just, you know, a couple of items for tonight.
Okay. Thank you for that. Congratulations on your vaccination appointment and thank you for kind of educating the residents as to maybe the best time and the best, the best policies to do that. With, I'll take it from the bottom up. So the in-person meeting, we've talked about that a couple of times already. I prefer, I've been on the record, I prefer in-person meetings, easier for me to administer. It's just easier for me. The issue, your valid point about maybe once more people are vaccinated, the issue that we had is if you remember two meetings in a row, we were at the high school. Why is that a bigger venue? We could have more occupancy when we're at 25 and now we're at 35%. The issue that we had then was a, two meetings went great and then we had a COVID outbreak in the high school and Dr. Tomco had to shut the whole high school down, which caused us last minute cancel our meeting. And unfortunately, the way that public advertising of meetings goes, we can't just pivot to an all online meeting. We can't just pivot to another venue. We have to cancel the entire meeting, which we have professional schedule. It just makes doing business, we do it twice a month, not like the Board of Ed that does it once a month. It makes it very difficult to do that. And again, we still believe that we do reach nearly everybody that wants to be reached on virtual here on web. Snow mounds, again, valid point. West Orange, bigger community, more, more square footage. Unfortunately, Bellville is kind of cramped for space. We don't have the huge amounts of open land that other municipalities have where we can just collect everything and dump it. Back in the day, listen, when I was a kid.
They used to take it to Branch Brook Park and dump it in the park.
And we used to also dump it in the Besseig River.
Well, I know you can't do that anymore.
That was my point, the DEP, because of the salt that's included in the snow, you can't do it anymore. And we just don't have that much municipal property. I know I've seen Mr. Icono and Bobby Welter shoehorn this stuff into different, you'll drive down Union Avenue and just see a 10-foot pile because it's a small sliver of municipal land that we've been able to dump stuff there. We're just, we're just cramped for space.
What about the, what about the golf course? I know it's, you know.
County property, they, they don't normally like all that sitting on their property either.
Come on, we can, we can talk Joe D into it.
I wish to, I wish to, but yeah, unfortunately, that's the answer. Thank you, though.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else, we're doing video first. Anybody else on video? I see a hand there. My friend Mitch, Fairview, you're up.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Just wanted a quick update on the progress with the golf course. As far as all the trees, I know that with the snow and the snowstorm and everything like that, I know it's been, you know, pretty hectic. Also, with these snow piles that we have going on, and you know how tight Fairview Place is, it took two ambulances to come down to the corner of Fairview and Minor. Took them about 15 minutes just to get from one side, one block, basically, from one block to the other side of a block because it was so tight. Now, have we talked to the is the, I believe the police officer, Chief Officer about the city planning on, you know, how that street can be either put into a one-way or is there anything else we can do? Because the amounts of snow that we have on this tight block and it's just basically, if you get two cars on one side plus that snow, it's impossible to pass.
Okay, I'm gonna assume that's it. That's the totality of your comments for today?
Ah, yes.
Okay, so yes, to answer your point, I will tell you that in my private office, the Fairview file is sitting prominently on my desk. The second we can, I can walk the golf course and the second I can get the county to reengage with me with regard to the, the trees and the issues there. I mean, I was there with you. We took pictures. I've communicated to the chief of staff that I want to have this conversation and we're going to get there. It's just, it's probably not going to be this week or next week, but I assure you, if I give you my word that it's on my desk, it's on my desk, we're going to get to it. And I also give you my word that I've actually followed up on the fact of this Fairview. Fairview is a very tight street. I was in the police chief's office, I think the end of last week, and him and I discussed it. His role as assistant township manager, he was able to direct the township engineer to go out there and take a look. They have gone out there and taken a look and they have not necessarily come back with something that's favorable to the residents of Fairview. I'm not, I do remember the conversation with the chief. I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but I do remember that they discussed, they measured the street. They don't think that it's really feasible to restrict parking to only one side of the street or make it a one-way because in their opinion, it very well may upset more residents than it's actually going to alleviate on that street. But I will tell you, I know that we've had the conversation, I know the chief is here now, but I do know that the township engineer, Mr. Haritz, was out in the site and did give it. I do not know if we have a written opinion on that. I don't really necessarily want to put the chief on the spot, but if he has anything to add to this, I would, I would love his input.
Yeah, from what I remember, from Mr. Haritz, the vehicles have actually gotten smaller over the years. The street's been like that as long as I've been alive, which is a long time. And it's, in his opinion and our traffic commander's opinion, it's, it's not too small, so to speak. And everything you said earlier about limiting to one side would not be feasible either as far as the rest of the residents finding parking.
I'm going to, chief, I'm going to, in your, in your role as police chief and assistant manager, if, since my buddy Mitch mentioned the fact that there was an issue with an ambulance or two ambulances getting down the street, can you maybe commute, I don't see our fire chief here. Can you maybe just reach out to the fire chief because if maybe they have an opinion too small for emergency vehicles, that might actually sway us?
I, I agree it would. Yeah, I'll talk to chief by the very first chance I get.
Thank you. Okay, all right, that'll work for me. And then Mitch, I guess, will give you an update at a future council meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Also, like a couple of months back in summertime, I did have the fire department come by for a drive-through for my son's birthday. And it took them literally almost 30 minutes to get from the corner where the golf course basically begins to make that turn and to come down with both cars parked on both sides. So, I mean, if you could get the apparatuses to come down that block and if the police chief can view it, you'll be able to see how tight and how narrow that street becomes, especially for an apparatus like a ladder truck or a pumper to get down there. It's definitely difficult.
That's a great recommendation and I'm certain the chief will have his traffic person on duty. And maybe we'll just do a drive-by and actually see if we had to get our largest piece of apparatus down your street, is it safe or not? With cars on both sides, I'm certain that the chief and the manager can facilitate that and we'll get an answer. That's the best I could do.
That's all I'm asking for, you know, just to look, see how it looks, if that's possible. If not, then it is what it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we're still on video. I do see Mr. Rodriguez there.
Sorry about that. How are you? Nice to see you. I want to just give a big shout out to that young girl with the dog problem because as a dog walker, I could tell you the Mertz Avenue and Rensselaer, those three streets there, Reservoir Street. People think that they don't have to pick it up because it's snowing, but you still do.
That's where she lives. She lives on Mertz.
Yeah, that street is really bad and division between, is that Rensselaer right there and Mertz is really bad. So big ups to that little girl. And I just wanted to, I was actually one of that, I need to correct you, Mayor, because there was actually seven people at the Board of Ed meeting last night, not four. So I was one of the seven people that ventured out into the cold and went to the, the, the meeting with Dr. Tomco. And I just think that our school district needs a little round of applause because we are one of the few school districts that are actually at five days a week. And there was no mention of that in the meeting. So just people that didn't know that should know that we've actually been afforded the opportunity to go to school five days a week. And it's a big help for the working class in Bellville. And Dr. Tomco should be applauded for all he's done. And with that, what I want to ask is, you said you watched the meeting recently or this morning, but the town council, the Board of Ed put forth a letter that they're all signing and sending to Trenton and all of our elected officials in Trenton, asking that if teachers can be prioritized for the vaccine. And I'm just wondering, would the council be willing to piggyback on this and saying that, you know, it's important as a community to afford, we all know who's getting vaccinated and it seems like the young woman said it's been three months she's been trying, but then you see some people on Facebook go, I got it, I got it, I got it. So if we could prioritize teachers and if you would be willing, like I brought it up last night, that I would be willing and I think the, all the, all the parents in the town, towns should be willing to, you know, maybe have a letting riding campaign, but if you as a council would put that forward towards, towards them, because the teachers, you know, we're allies, we're not adversaries. As far as getting the schools open and the teachers need to be comfortable. So I was just wondering if you guys would be willing to do that. And thank you again for, you know, creating this where we have 40 people, you know, 37 more, 33 more than the town than the Board of Ed meeting last night.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I would, I would, I've been outspoken. I first and foremost want to be very clear. I think we should be back in school. I think our children should be back in school. I know parents of, and it's not my purview because I'm not on the Board of Education, I'm not a policymaker there, but parents of children in Catholic school and private schools, those kids have been back in school full-time for a long time. I think our children need to be back in school immediately. I think they need to be back in school full-time immediately. And if it takes prioritizing teachers to make them comfortable, to make them come back to school, I would be supportive of that. There's no, there's no question about that. And thank you for your comments. So again, we're still on video. Anybody that's on video, I see Mr. Casa, sure.
Good evening. How are you today? Just a couple of points I just want to make. Just want to just go over a couple of quick things that my tax bill, my final bill came in and just want to let you know that it went up a little over 600 last year. And then when you add that to the water bill that went up, it'll come up to about 1,300 more a year I got to pay. I know that when you first came out with this, the new water bill rate going up, mine went from 25 flat to 55. And now it was $1.2 million we owed NORC. So what are the last two billing cycles? How much more do we still owe NORC? And then once that's paid, will the water bill go back down? And then the other point, I just want to say, with the Kmart building down, down in the valley there, the new zone that you, that everyone was talking about making it a VB1 housing, would that mean that there'll be like businesses on the bottom floors and then housing on top for residential? Because if that's the case, I think that's not going to be such a great idea due to, like, we're all talking about this now, parking. There's very limited parking in these, in this town. And the new building that's going up on Franklin Ave, right on the border of Nutley, that was zoned first for 32 apartments. Then it was going to go to 27, then they found a little bit more space and now it's up to 54. And with all the cars that can be parked there, once it's fully occupied, during a big snowstorm like this, most cars are probably going to be parked at Franklin Ave and we're going to get the notices to move all cars off the main highways and they're not going to have nowhere to put them cars in. So we've got to think about putting housing units there because then when you start putting housing units, what's going to happen is you're going to create more people going to schools, schools are going to need more room and we're running out of space as it is. And the last thing I just want to say is, with the meeting tonight being on on the computer, that's fine and everything, but I still think we should still have it maybe used the high school like they did yesterday and last week. We can still go on computer there. So you can still see people who can't make it, but then the public can still attend also.
Yeah, I may kind of address the whole school issue. I'd love to be there, but the problem is the last minute cancellation does disrupt municipal business. The council can't vote on bill lists, we can't approve contracts. There's a lot of things we can't do. Unfortunately, that's why that doesn't necessarily work. I'm all for getting in person as close and as soon as we can. You started out by mentioning your tax bill increase and your water bill increase. If I'm open to suggestions, if you could figure out a way where we can reduce or stabilize your taxes without creating more developments in town, which is more revenue on the budget side of things, I'm open to it, but I honestly believe, and I've been outspoken on this, Bellville for 15 years or so didn't create any new developments. And because of that, every single year, municipal budget ticks up a little bit because of contractual obligations. And as those, those budget ticks up every year, if we're not building any new ratables to get new, to get new revenue in, unfortunately, yourself, my mother and every single member of the municipal council at the taxpayer, our budget, I know our taxes go up. If there's a better formula out there, I'm open to it. I haven't found one yet. I appreciate the fact that you mentioned the, the water bill. Again, that was not necessarily my increase. That was voted on by every single member of the council. And we discussed this at length over the past few months. I'm not sure you were part of that conversation, but we realized because we finally brought in a full-time in-house CFO, which we did not have before, they realized that it costs us about $8 million a year to run our water utility. The problem is what we were receiving every year was only about $6 million. So we were running a $2 million deficit. So the money we collected from the water bill was $2 million less than what we paid NORC. The issue with that is that it would then be made up from by municipal taxes. The issue with that is people that live in, say, Silver Lake, which pay their water right to NORC, their taxes are going up to pay everybody else's water bill. And although we never heard that argument from the First Ward Council person, that's a fact and it just wasn't fair. So to answer your question, we owed NORC, I believe, there's so many numbers going around lately. Mr. Martino could maybe fill me in, but I think it was about $1.6 million is what we owed NORC because when NORC's contract expired four or five years ago, the council, I was not here, the council chose not to renew that, but yet the increase kept going up. So we owed them a flat fee of 1.5, 1.6 million dollars. On top of that, what you may not know is the federal government then stepped in and for some strange reason mandated this township to replace a certain percentage of our lead, lead lines. Now, they're not our municipal lead service lines, they're the They're the homeowner's led service line. So, and as you've been in Belleville a long time, uh, you know that the residential led service line, uh, the residential lead line is the homeowner's responsibility. For some reason, the federal government said, nope, Belleville, you have to replace a certain percent. Uh, that percent ended up being about four hundred lead lines, another one point six million dollars that we had a bond to. So the one point six approximately that we owed NORC, the one point six, uh, in federal money that we had a bond is three point two. And then to meet the current NORC water rate, which had ticked up in the five years that we had been paying the same exact rate flat. Uh, unfortunately, our financial people have struck a rate of, you know, the fifty five dollar per usage. And, uh, they feel that the revenue that that's going to bring in across all of our ta- uh, our water payers. Keep in mind, you're paying a residential rate, commercial payers are paying, uh, not double. Uh, your fifty five dollars a quarter minimum, they are, commercial users are thirty dollars a month. So that's about ninety dollars a quarter. So they're almost double. Uh, the the flat rate and the, uh, usage rate is a lot more money than the residential rate. And again, I know it pains everybody that's getting this bill, but we we had to, we had to correct the issue. The issue was we were running a two million dollar deficit every single year that was being absorbed by you, the municipal taxpayer. If we can now get that water utility acting properly, uh, it may very well mean a cost savings on the taxpayer side. Uh, I know most people don't believe that, uh, and I would like that to really be the case. Uh, unfortunately, sometimes that money gets absorbed elsewhere, but that's really it. And I do not, the one issue I'll take with you is that I don't think that uh, science and math and studies and statistics and neighboring municipalities will all show that new residential developments, like you said, uh, that we call them the four over ones, the first level commercial, three levels or four levels of residential above it. Um, smaller unit sizes, one bedroom studios, maybe a couple of two bedrooms are not producing the amount of school age children. Uh, state of New Jersey actually says that our our enrollment has been down in the past five or six years. Um, the Harrison that built three thousand units in the last eight or ten years actually has had a net decrease in student population by adding three thousand units because young professionals are just not having the amount of kids that that my parents had, uh, and they're not necessarily raising family in small one bedroom studios or micro apartments. Uh, but, you know, that's a, that's a topic for debate, I guess, and and it really matters on your personal opinion on that. Uh, but that's, I think, kind of, at least I've addressed, I think, some of your concerns. I it may be not satisfy you, but I think uh, that that's really the township's position on a lot of those topics. Uh, a- anybody else? I'm looking at hands here. I don't see anybody else on video raising a hand. So we've gone through our emailed in questions. We're exhausted. Anybody that's on video? The next, uh, and the last rung of public participation is going to be anybody that is joining us via audio. Uh, please, just one at a time, if you may, just unmute yourself and, uh, announce your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes to speak. Do we have anybody?
Um, yes, Michael Sheldon, forty seventh Floyd Street.
Okay, Mr. Sheldon, you have five minutes.
Yes, I do. Uh, first thing, uh, I noticed this morning that, uh, moving westerly on Drolleman, crossing Franklin Avenue, the delayed green, the left turn on green is no longer working. It was completely dark. Uh, I know that Drolleman is a township road and Franklin is a county road. I don't know who has uh, responsibility for maintaining that turn signal, but it should be fixed considering the high traffic volume for that that location. Uh, at the last council meeting, I spoke about the, uh, recent statistical sampling I did of tax increases in Belleville from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. And my calculation indicated that, uh, the tax had gone up by about five point eight percent. I got the usual eye rolls and scoffs at that time, but just last week, the New Jersey State Treasury and the DCA released the twenty twenty data and sure enough, the Belleville tax increase from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty was five point eight one percent. So fault me for not doing my calculation to three significant figures. But the sad reality is at this growth rate, I hope it doesn't continue this way. We'll soon see within a month, we'll have the Board of Education budget for the next academic year and you're promising to soon have the municipal budget in hand. But at a five point eight percent growth rate, within the next four years, the average property tax bill for a Belleville resident is going to go up by over twenty five hundred dollars. Uh, next topic, uh, you, uh, um, you made a really an unfair comparison between the Board of Ed meetings and council meetings. As you know, the Board of Ed isn't using Zoom, so anyone who wants to ask a question at a board meeting either has to show up in person or submit a written question ahead of time. Uh, if you look at the YouTube livestream, typically there are well over a hundred people watching the live broadcast of the Board of Education meeting on any given night. So there's seems to be a much larger audience for board meetings when all is said and done than council, unless you have, you know, a hundred or more people watching the Facebook stream for this meeting. But, uh, the next thing I wanted to ask you, um, Mr. Melam, I want, would like you to clarify something and it could be just a simple yes or no. I I looked at some of your CV on social media like LinkedIn and similar areas. Uh, especially I was interested in your educational background. You have that you have a bachelor's degree from William Patterson. And then you have, uh, Rutgers University reference to city and regional planning, community and regional planning uh, with the date of two thousand six. So my question to you is, do you have a degree from Rutgers University? Could you just tell me yes or no at this point?
I'm gonna wait.
No, it's important because I have a follow up question. I would like to know, yes or no, do you have a degree from from Rutgers?
I'm going to answer that when you're done with your time.
No, it's not because you're gonna, you're gonna dodge the issue. I need to know because I have a follow up question.
I'm not going to dodge the question.
All right, you're not going to answer. I I want the whole community to know that, uh, contrary to what Mr. Melham is is had like everyone to believe, he does not have a degree from Rutgers University. In fact, I have his record from the Rutgers Register's office. And just like Mr. Natari, who falsely claimed to have a PhD in English from Rutgers, Mr. Melham attended Rutgers for one and a half years, three semesters from fall two thousand six to fall two thousand seven. He racked up an impressive fifteen, uh, at most fifteen credits during that period of time, never was, never received a degree. But yet, you know, he he on the township website, it says that he's still pursuing a master's. Well, you know, that's a long pursuit. This is fourteen years. Yeah, smile, give me your goofy little grin as usual, but it's fourteen years after you severed ties with Rutgers University. How much longer are you going to be pursuing your master's degree? You don't have a master's degree. You started a program and 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 did not come close to finishing it. So you can give me your little spin in a few moments when I'm not able to reply. Lastly, lastly, let me even know you didn't want to answer. So you wait, wait. Now, I don't want you to take my time. I have one more thing to say. In regard to the the painting behind you, uh, you said it's on loan from the library. It's come to my attention that that painting comes from the Hornblower family. And when they donated it to the library, it was explicitly said that that painting was to remain in the library on public view. So effectively, and Mr. Martino, just as you tried, Mr. Martino tried to uh, threaten me with arrest for township property right after you came became township attorney. Mr. Melham arguably has acquired a painting under false pretenses, a painting that is supposed to remain in the library, but is now in his office, something that is valued at at least a hundred thousand dollars. And he said a moment ago, a hundred and fifty. So I think the argument could be made that he has stolen township property and anything over seventy five thousand dollars is a second degree felony. So I am therefore, I am making a citizen's arrest. I want you, Mr. Melham, arrested for theft of library property. I am ordering, I am, I am compelling Chief Minakini and Mr. Martino to go to your office in the next few minutes, arrest you for theft of that property.
As entertaining as this actually, this is more entertaining than than usual. So I I applaud.
I'm glad to make you laugh. Liar and a pathological liar.
Okay, you're now muted. If you further disrupt the meeting, you'll be removed. So, uh, Mr. Sheldon had the opportunity to speak for five minutes. I will, uh, I think I've already addressed the painting behind me. Uh, full display here for everybody to see it, uh, right, every, just so everybody's very clear. In every single reference to me, uh, in my education, I have a day, a degree in communication from William Patterson University, and I have been adamant. Every single way where it's published, I talk about I am pursuing, uh, or hat, and I've actually joked about how long the pursuit has been. Uh, I was a non-matriculated student. I obtained fifteen credits. I got a waiver to eighteen. I believe I even had a waiver to twenty one credits, so about seventeen credits shy. I just did not at the time want to take my GREs. Now, at the time, you can get a master's degree without the GRE. I've never, ever, ever once said that I have a master's degree in public administration, or I'm sorry, city regional planning. I would like to get a dual masters one day in both of them, but I have never, 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 ever once said that I have a master's degree in planning or public policy. I've always.
Your LinkedIn page.
Sheldon, you're being disruptive. If you're disruptive again, I will have you removed from the meeting. So, uh, I believe everywhere that I've stated in my bio, I have never once said that I hold a master's degree, never once. Um, that was that, uh, Board of Education visitors, yes, I would probably think that there were a hundred people watching the Board of Education meeting on Facebook. Uh, more than likely because there's a heck of a lot of parents out there that are upset that their children are not in school. And they probably want to find out what the heck is going on in the school district. So I'm assuming that that's probably the reason why. Green light, thank you for bringing that to our attention. I'll make sure that our police chief and Mr. Icona are very much aware of that. Do we have anybody else that wants to unmute themselves and state their name and address for the record and have five minutes? Okay, so we went through all of our email comments. We've gone through all of our video comments and I think I've given plenty of time at this point to do anybody that is joining us via audio. So at this point, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn public comments.
Oh, moved.
Second.
We have a motion made in second. Uh, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Tanya.
Mayor, just want to bring to your attention, there is someone with a hand raised.
Oh, thank you for that.
Um, I'm not sure. It's a name and last name altogether.
What page, what, I don't think anybody would hand up.
Oh, they did unmute themselves. No, I I but I can see it here. Y A E L A.
It's a virtual hand.
It's a virtual.
Virtual. I I don't even know what a virtual hand is. Okay.
It's a yellow hand. It's an emoji, an emoji.
I I don't get it on my screen, so.
Okay, um.
Okay, so if there's anybody there that wait. Can they?
It's Yale. The name's Yale.
Yes.
Yale, I just need you to unmute yourself.
I think the person took it down.
Okay, so they're not. All right, so yes. Then I'm going to guess.
Good catch. I, okay. Uh, all right, well, I think we had a motion made in second. Uh, let's have a roll call on that, please.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Okay, resolutions, everybody. I think I'm good this time with everything.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to pull six.
Steve, you had something, Steve?
Six.
Oh, six. And ten, you said?
Yeah.
Got it. Six and ten are pulled. Anybody else? Nope. Hearing none. We're going to make a, I'm going to entertain a motion to move the consent agenda with the exception of item number six and item number ten.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Uh, number six, myself and I guess Councilman Revell wanted to pull that one. I'll let you go first, Councilman.
Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to acknowledge the loss of Rich Ferrugia and, uh, he he's been so involved in this community and with the vets for many, many years. So, uh, to his family and everybody, our prayers go out.
Absolutely. Uh, I've known Rich a long time. I used to play baseball with his son in high school. Uh, had lunch with Rich probably two or three times a week, a couple of years back. Uh, close confidant of Assemblyman Caputo, uh, involved, as you said, Councilman, in our veterans organizations, was a commander of the American Legion on Belmont Avenue. Uh, we just actually gave them a a contribution and, uh, I talked to him, I talked to him on on, uh, Tuesday, uh, and then I found out he had passed on Saturday, a terrible, terrible tragedy. Uh, my prayers and condolences go to him and his family, his wife Helen, of course. Um, good man, and it's it's certainly a loss to the township. If, uh, nobody else has any comments, we'll call a roll on that one.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Uh, number ten.
Okay, before I move that, I just wanted to see if we can get the, um, the township manager and and council to talk to NORC before we sign this to get maybe some sort of assistance to help us out with Clara Moss since approximately two million dollars worth of charity care goes their way from Clara, and it would make sense to me that they'd be willing to help us. And I don't know whether we need to do a resolution separately to do, to request that or how you guys want to handle it, but I, you know, this is the time to do it.
It's a great, um, a great suggestion. I think it was actually your suggestion in executive session a couple of meetings ago uh, to explore that. I do not want to put words into the manager's mouth, but I believe the manager has reached out, uh, to certain officials in NORC and, uh, I'm not quite sure they were necessarily open to the, your idea, Councilman.
Sure they weren't.
Yeah. Well, would a resol- a separate resolution help?
We could put the separate resolution together, can't we?
Not wrong, passing a resolution, we can do that next meeting. I mean, that's.
All right, let's give it a shot.
Yeah, we give it a shot.
Here, hurt. Um, can I, can I make a statement here, Mayor? Well, I I just want you to know that the the there's a reason why this contract has to get signed. They did reject it. I don't know if a resolution is going to help, but they outright rejected it. We asked for Clara Moss's assistance. That didn't occur. So, uh, there's, there, our township engineer says we need the contract signed and every meeting that goes by, there's a problem because of.
Development.
protections and so on and so forth.
I I don't think anybody was considering not, not going forward with this contract. I just think.
Oh, yeah, right, exactly. An additional thing and it may. Okay, that's fine. That's fine. I just, there's an importance to sign it to. Again, it's not, we're going to sign it, then NORC has to sign it. It could take another month anyway, but I I just want everybody to know there's a, there's an importance and an urgency to this.
I do know that the answer wasn't a positive answer that the town manager received. Uh, but I think maybe you're under, underestimating the power of this council to pass a resolution and
Absolutely.
and get the city of NORC to act.
Hey.
It might carry a lot of weight.
Second.
Worth the shot. Worth the shot. Uh, yeah, unfortunately, though, I I think, listen, uh, for the public that's still paying attention, thankfully, we didn't get really many, uh, any, any questions at all on this thing. Uh, we have no other choices, everybody. I mean, this is a monopoly we're dealing with. Uh, you know, I I was anticipating some, some questions about this. It's a ten year contract. It it goes up every single year. Uh, we, we know what it costs us now to run our water utility. Uh, in case somebody was wondering about the quality of NORC's water, NORC's done a great job in the last two years or so to solve some of the contaminant issue and solve some of the issues of, uh, individuals who still have lead service lines, having that lead leach into their own water supply. Uh, NORC's done a great job in their treatment the last two years or so. Mayor Barack has actually won national acclaim uh, for his water service line, uh, replacement service. Um, you know, it's easy. When you get a hundred fifty million dollars from the Port Authority, you can replace everybody's lead service line. We don't have that ability. Uh, we just replaced about, are about to replace about three hundred fifty to the tune of one point six or a couple of million dollars, I think. Uh, but unfortunately, there's no other vendor that we can buy from. Unfortunately, this is a monopoly and, uh, we had very little negotiating power. We were negotiating from a power of weakness, unfortunately. Uh, town attorney did a good job getting us better terms, I think. Uh, but, uh, we've kind of, we're, our hands, our hands are tied here in all reality, unfortunately. Uh, okay, so clerk, can you, anybody?
I'm going to move it. I moved it.
We have a move, uh, we have a second somewhere? Okay, we have a motion made in second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Uh, next item, resolutions on a table, B. Madam clerk, do we just?
I'd like to make a motion to bring resolution number one of the table.
Okay, we have a second.
Second motion.
Do we have, uh?
A motion made in second, so I have to call the roll now. We could discuss it after that, Ben. We have a motion made in second to take it off the table. Once there's a motion and a second, I have to call a roll on that. So clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
No.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Okay, so now that come, that resolution's off the table. Vinnie, I think you had something that you wanted to say.
Yeah, just a quick thing. I don't know if, I don't see the town manager anymore. I think he may.
I'm here. Ben, I'm here.
So me and the, uh, town manager, uh, yesterday spoke with Jaffe, um, So me and the, uh, town manager, uh, yesterday spoke with Jaffe, um, directly, and they're coming up with a new contract. I don't know if they have it yet, but they were supposed to send it to him by tonight's meeting. I don't think they did that yet. Anthony, do you have an update on that?
No, I spoke to, uh, Jonathan yesterday, and he said he was going to, uh, get it to me today, which I did not get it today. So I'll call him tomorrow morning, and we'll, we'll have it ready for consideration, uh, for the first meeting in March.
Well, at this point, I think at this point, this resolution is the one up for consideration. There's gonna be a change, there can come a change later in the fact, but at this point, this resolution's off the table, and I think we are gonna, does anybody wanna make a motion to move it?
So, um, let me just clarify, um, with, uh, Anthony, so what you're saying, so, cause we're, we're voting on this contract that they've presented, so they would like to present us a different contract?
I think, I think from what my understanding of it is, is that they thought that there wasn't necessarily a, a, a sentiment to actually go forward with this particular. I prefer this, this is just a flat rate, this is what we've always had for the past two years.
Absolutely, I mean, we've done business with them before.
I think there was a, a, a motion or, or an, an interest to maybe mirror what the Board of Education has, which is an hourly rate. The problem with education contract, uh, first of all, this was floated as a shared service. There's absolutely no point to do a shared service. They have a contract, we have a contract. Uh, and I'm not necessarily interested in an hourly rate, because I then think it would get micromanaged every single thing that we do. Uh, before a photographer on site, we're gonna pay for every single press release, every single phone call. Uh, I, I don't see a need to, to change that at all. I think it's been working great for the past year and a half. I think that Belleville has benefited from the positive press that we never had, uh, historically. And, uh, I, I, I just find it hard to believe that we're actually having this kind of debate.
Hey, I think you can really control your costs here by doing it on a consulting basis, where they not exceed, and then you can always play with that number as you move forward to see and control, cause I believe you do need to control it, and that we should all have the ability to approve what goes out in public.
Yeah, I'm gonna, and I'm gonna certainly give everybody the opportunity to look at every single contract that, uh, the township issues and every single consult.
I think you should go through the, the manager, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, at this point, there's a.
Moderate.
At this point, there's a, there's a, a resolution off the table that, that does require a motion to move it, and then we can, we can vote and see, and see what happens. Uh, so I do, do need a motion to move it.
Some move.
Second it.
We have a motion made in second. Uh, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
No.
Tanya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
No.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Next item on the agenda is new business. Do we have anything for new business?
I, real quick, I got one thing for, uh, the manager. During the meeting, I just got sent a picture of the new fence at Fairway Park. And, uh, apparently the snowplows from, uh, seven twenty-five. Drollman destroyed it, and, you know, after we had, I think we had told them last year that, you know, if they do any damage to it, they're gonna be held responsible. So I know the police chief is on here. Police, uh, chief, could you do a police report on that tomorrow? Um, and maybe, uh, we, I don't know if we have to get the insurance companies involved or what, but, I mean, they really, they didn't bump it with the plow. They dropped something on it and literally destroyed a section of it.
I mean.
Or contact the management company over there, whoever that is, whatever.
Mr. Manager, I'm assuming you are somewhere taking a note. Is he here? Is the manager here?
If it's, whose fence is it, Vinnie? Uh, Councilman Cazarelli?
It's the township's fence.
Brand-new fence.
Brand-new fence.
I'll, I'll see, um, the manager, Iacono, tomorrow morning, we'll take care of it. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I want an emotion adjourned.
Just two quick things. Um, I know we, we talked a little bit about a resolution in support of the teachers being vaccinated and one in support of, you know, getting some help for Clara Moss from, from Newark, so I'd appreciate that get done.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Mr., I don't see the manager, but Mr. Town Attorney and Mr. Assistant Manager, if you guys can, uh, facilitate that for maybe our next council meeting.
Yep, the manager, the manager's on, just having a little difficulty with the, uh, phone, but I'm on.
All right. The resolution's done, Mayor, um, and Councilman Rovell. I'll get the resolutions done and we'll have them on for next meeting.
Thank you.
Cool.
All right, anything else? I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Checking it.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Thank you, everybody.
Adios.
Bye-bye.